Okay, I'm calling this Board of Finance regular meeting Tuesday, May sixteenth. At seven fifty-three. All members are present. Julie Mangino is attending via Zoom. First order of business is approval of the regular meeting minutes of April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Has everybody had a chance to read them?
Yes.
Yes.
Need a motion?
We have a motion to approve.
Yes.
Second, right, discussion. I actually have one minor thing. In the business section, second to last sentence. Katie inquired how many of the students who are being brought up to state standard tuition and like this isn't a big deal, but my specific question was to that one class that had the extra teacher. I was just curious if there's one or ten or, you know, because it's.
I can, I can clarify.
Does anybody else have anything to add?
No.
They're all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carries unanimously. Approval of the Roxbury Board of Finance Public Hearing Special Meeting, April twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three minutes. Do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carries unanimous. Next order of business is the suspension list. I'm sorry, mill rate.
Skip right on with that.
So we all have different buy downs.
Yeah.
Scenarios that Kim Baron was kind enough to put together for us. The twelve seven five is what's been suggested by the Board of Selectmen. Which is showing where's the buy down rate on here? For the twelve seven five.
It's going to be from town balance. So this lower green line is the one you're looking at.
Okay, oh, right, right.
So this is the one right here.
Seventy to five or six eighty-eight.
No.
Six thirty, seven ninety-eight. If we say it, if we do twelve forty-two, twelve seventy-five is yes, six eighty-eight, eight ninety-seven.
Alright, so the
Four oh three, eight thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry, four oh three, eight thirty-seven, yeah, wrong line, sorry.
So the Board of Selectmen has suggested a buy down of four oh three, eight thirty-seven from lower rate twelve seven five. State statute prefers that we go no, no lower than twenty-five percent, which is three months. I've also heard two to two and a half months, but so if we were to go down this, this is a scenario to go down to that twenty-five percent we have in the fund balance. Kim, what, what, what will we be looking at then for buy down?
For?
Twenty-five percent.
Uh, would be the twelve point four two.
Twelve point four two.
Six thirty-seven ninety-eight. That wasn't close as I could get.
Okay, so, so if we were to go down, go down to an exact twenty-five percent, it would be six thirty-seven ninety-eight. Personally, I think we're in a very good position. We have two huge expenses, actually three, at the tennis court and both bridges, which are not going to be, well, the Weller's Bridge will be half, the other half will be in next year's budget. But between the tennis court, which Patrick is one, a couple hundred, two hundred thousand.
Yep.
And the seven hundred for minor bridge.
Tanks.
And the oil.
And the oil tanks. They're all, they won't be around next year. And of that five fifty that we're putting in this year and next year for Waller's Bridge, the one point one million, we will be getting reimbursed for. So I, I, I think I think the town's in really good shape. So I'd like to open up the floor for discussion, see what everybody thinks.
I'm a little concerned about the timing issues as it relates to reimbursement. You know, we've had so many people leaving the state government offices, even getting somebody on the phone sometimes. Right, Kim? That's, that's an issue.
It is a problem.
So I worry about that. I mean, honestly, I think I think people kind of, they don't really they, or they, I should say, people focus too much on the mill rate. At the end of the day, it's revenue costs net and so that's just my thought. I, I, I tend, I would like to be more conservative at this juncture.
In the bottom, what would you suggest?
Well, I, I, you know, I'm happy at twelve seven five or the twelve six five. I mean, twelve fifty isn't that bad either, but I just, I don't know. I don't, I don't want to see us going, you know, to twelve four two. I just think that's want to keep money in the bank.
Yeah. I, I would agree with you, Paul. It, um, especially because of the timing aspect of it. Because, you know, who knows what else could happen in the next year, the next years, whatever, and, and things get delayed again at, at state level.
What if we default?
And, oh, Jesus, well, we know that's not gonna, anyway, but I think in, and in some respects, twelve forty-two almost looks a little manufactured, like we're trying a little too hard to make, I mean, yes, I would be thrilled because my taxes will be lowered. Um, but at the same time, I think fiscal responsibility says we should I, I would be very comfortable at twelve sixty-five or twelve fifty. Even twelve fifty perhaps is cutting it a little close, just again because of the timing issue. But I think twelve sixty-five shows we're, you know, we're watching every penny and I think it would, I think would be, um, well received.
It's a pretty significant move in terms of the mill rate goes, and that, so the perception will be positive.
Bruce, you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I, I have some of the same concern, but for just a little different reasons. Kim, I know that's impossible to do this, but you know, where do you think our budget's going to be a year? I mean, what, what I'm driving at, I think it's the same issue about conservatism, is are we going to base a big increase of mill rate next year and get slammed for? I'd rather not go be that aggressive this year to prevent a big problem next year. I don't, I mean.
It's so easier to go down than it is to go up.
Yeah, uh, and
You know, it's always the school. You go back to the school, school's the biggest nugget. And, and we have no control over it and it's
But do we have any, well, do we have any expectation about the school? I mean, kids, most of the kids are here.
We know that, um, the biggest increases for the next five years, according to the school's projections, will be in Bridgewater. Now granted, that's the smallest town, but just as a perspective, where the increase, our increase ended up being what, eighty-nine thousand when it was all said and done? And there it was like six hundred eighty.
Right, and that's what, that's the kind of thing I worry about. And I think we're going to get slammed if we, you know, we then say, come next year and say, oh, you're back to fifteen next year.
Yeah.
You know, or, or something like that.
That's a very good point, powerful point.
I have, I have a lot of forecasting to do, um, on the expense side and revenue side that I haven't been able to get to.
Yeah, I, I'm not expecting a real answer, but
Yeah, no.
Directionally, what do you see sort of?
Right, so I, I know last year I, I did talk to the business manager of Region Twelve and she said, well, you're losing a lot of kids in the going into the high school. They're, they're going out, you know, we, we lost like, it was thirteen kids.
Graduating.
Right, well, no, they're not graduating.
They're going to boarding schools.
They, they were going to other schools.
They're coming out off our budget.
Right, right, exactly.
Go to Taft.
So it's not necessarily the, you know, I think people tend to look towards boot free school as the barometer of how our budget's going to go, if school budget's going to go up and down, but you really have to look in the weeds now, you have to get the grades, so, um, it's, it's hard to say, it's hard to say at this point. I, I, I wish I had a better answer for you, but
It's more likely to go up than down?
Yeah, I mean, their budget overall is going up.
We've got two easy years. We've got two.
We've got two easier, but that's, that's what I worry about.
I mean, and me too.
I worry less about the state reimbursement because I think that's, that's a cash flow issue.
Right, we're always getting the tuition back, you know, when they talk about tuition, then we talk about that. We always get that money back from the school district.
It was three hundred, you said a million dollars. It was ours was three hundred.
I, I would say.
And ours is projected to be
Well, the bridge reimbursements, those project reimbursements, they've been late, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but when they're late, do we have to account for it currently in the budget or is it just?
We do, but remember, we're not borrowing money. That's what makes our town so unique. So yes, it is just accounts payable, accounts receivable, it's going to wash in it. Um, so we don't have the financial aspect of, of financing that.
Let me just take Paul's point and, if the reimbursement was delayed a year. Sorry, just making that up. Would that affect our budget next year?
No.
See, that's what I think.
For Weller's Bridge?
Well, no, we're talking like, it, it, it's an example, so I would, I would not use the federal bridge program for Weller's Bridge as an example. I would use Davenport, the one that we just did, and not really, because we, it, it's still a receivable.
See, that's what I would have thought. If we, if we have the cash to pay, if it's not a cash flow issue.
Yeah.
Then I don't worry about the delay in reimbursement. I'm not saying it's good. But I don't worry about, but I do worry about our expenses going up a lot. And we're faced with having to tell everybody next year.
Whoops.
Yeah, we, we were too, you know, too, too skinny last year and now we're going to get
I think it's for fiduciaries, we, we really need to keep that in mind.
Remember, whatever you're buying it down, you have to assume that same buy down next year. So tighter we keep our budget, the less extra in the unassigned fund balance. I mean, what that is, is the over projection of what we didn't spend in previous year. So that's assuming that we don't use all that money. Uh, we did have a lot less police officers, uh, this year because we had bill was out most of the year. I mean, there were things that contributed to that, that if everything works correctly and we budget correctly, we shouldn't necessarily have that surplus.
Well, I guess I, I, I'm also on the, uh, side of being conservative this year because another thing is there, there were so many variables that changed this year, the, um, the reassessment, um, and, um, I always worry about the schools. I always worry, you know, all we, all it takes is a couple of families moving in. And, you know, we get, we get hit, so I always, I always worry about that. And I, I guess I would rather, you know, a bird in the hand, I'd rather wait i- i- until next year, um, if the money is all in and we feel comfortable. I'd rather, I'd rather do another, um, adjustment next year rather than doing too much than
I agree.
Too much this year.
Yeah.
Julie, you have anything?
So this is all a learning experience for me because I'm new and so this is very interesting to listen to, but I agree with what everyone is saying and I, my gut tells me that twelve point four two seems risky and I'm not usually a very risky person, so I would stay with at least the twelve five or the twelve six five. I'd be comfortable with either.
Okay.
I was just, I, I had a thought about, um, just lose my thought. The, oh, we had a buy down, we started, we started the budget process, we were looking at last June thirtieth. And then we talked about it. I think you added two hundred fifty or two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
This year.
Yeah.
Which allows us.
To the unassigned fund balance.
Right, which allows us this. So we don't know next year whether we're going to have that additional amount. So I wouldn't even think necessarily promising we could, we, we could buy down as much this, next year as we're doing this year.
That's just why I, I'm leaning towards twelve seven five. That number doesn't bother me. I mean, there's a big differential between twelve four two and twelve seven five, and it's still a significant move.
Well, let me ask you, Patrick, if we, if we say took twelve seventy-five, I'm not saying I'm there, but took it. And then we end up with more than three months reserve. Do we get dinged in any way? Does anybody criticize us?
Absolutely not. And honestly, the three months, the twenty-five percent is a max. You look at every other mathematical con, you know, calculation for it and their recommendation. And that's really the max that you should hold. Um, other towns like Washington, Bridgewater, do have many more millions in their unassigned fund balance. I personally feel that's a disservice to their residents because if you have money just sitting there that's not being utilized, you know, you want to pay taxes so the bridge gets fixed, the road gets chip sealed. The thing, you know, the, the machines are there, but we have to plow snow and the salt's there and everything. Yes, we've seen it increase in a lot of these expenses. Um, and there's nothing that'll tell me that, um, we're not going to have some extra. There are also variables, so, um, you know, what I felt or, and, and Kim and I felt with the twelve seven five was very conservative. Very, very strong with that. Um, I do feel there's probably a little still feel comfortable.
Big, big items coming next year. I mean, we're going to get rid of those, the oil tanks.
Where do you get rid of the oil tanks?
Water bridge is going to go away.
No, Weller's Bridge, we've got another payment on. Remember, we have two years, two payments of Weller's Bridge.
Minor, minor.
Minor bridge is done. So if I was to add more things, the things that I would have added is more pavement money, more chip sealing money, you know, more money to the parks and stuff like that. Uh, but no huge expenses that we see, you know, yes, we're going to need, you know, another loader to replace the other one. We'll probably need another truck and stuff like that that we're going to start working towards. But we do have a lot of capital projects that we need to get done this year that we already have money for.
Yes.
Already spoken for.
How much are the next, how much are the tanks are going to make?
Two fifty.
So you're seven hundred, two hundred, yeah, fifty, yeah, so you're well north of a million dollars that we're at, that we're not going to have to deal with that.
Correct. That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all very fair.
And those are projects, once we accomplish those, they'll
They last. Gone for years and, and you know, the rebuild projects, you know, that's going to add, you know, thirty to fifty years on every single bridge that we touched. And these hadn't been touched ever.
Sure.
So yes, we did, and I, I'll, I'll say we, I have bitten off quite a bit with a lot of these projects, but we're doing it a cost effective way and, you know, efficiently at this point too.
I really believe there's also a naming opportunity for the tennis court, let's be honest.
Do I see the Paul Healy?
No, no. Not doing that.
Play tennis.
But you don't play tennis.
But this is, uh, may or may not be relevant, but just some numbers I read. And that is, at what percentage increase of your assessment do you break even in terms of taxes? If your assessment went up more than that, you pay more if it's less.
I know what that figure is.
At twelve seven to five, it was nineteen
Yeah.
point six percent. But if you go to twelve fifty, for example, that raises to twenty-two percent. And if you went to twelve forty-two, it becomes twenty-two point eight. So it's just more people who wouldn't have an increase. What I'd love to see frankly would be a ability with our assessment numbers to be able to sort and, and say, tell you exactly how many people are going to have how much of an increase or decrease. It seems to me that we have, that all the data is there. It's a question of how you sort, how you sort it and look at. That would be, to me, would be a helpful thing to know. I know we've never done it, it's not required, but to me it would be helpful. I'm actually, would think we should go lower than twelve seven five, but higher than twelve two.
It seems like the consensus is around four five.
I'd go twelve six.
Yeah, you could go in between those two, right?
Twelve six five.
Twelve six.
Twelve six five, yeah.
Julie, how are you, um, what are you thinking for a number?
I was going to ask that same question because twelve six obviously isn't shown on the spreadsheet, but that kind of brings us right to the middle, so I would say.
At a five hundred and thirty thousand dollar itch buy down. Is that?
Yeah.
Actually, uh,
That gives you a hundred thousand dollars.
Because you're, you're hi, much higher on the twelve five and six, you're only five percent down.
But if, if six thirty brings you down to twenty-five percent, um, yeah, about five thirty, so it's about a hundred thousand, you'd be over.
I think Kim might have just gone to run it.
So personally, I would be fine with, with the twelve four two, but if everybody's in consensus for twelve six, I'm fine with that also.
I'd be happy with twelve six.
In the federal tax code, they used to have depletion of twenty-two and a half percent. Twenty-two and a half percent was about a depletion you could take if you owned an oil wells. How'd you get to twenty-two and a half percent, right? Well, the House wanted twenty-five percent and the Senate wanted twenty percent. So it came out twenty-two point five.
Right, right.
That's the baby.
That's what we're talking about now.
Well, well, let's hope, let's hope that they can figure something similar out this week.
Yeah, lots of luck.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd be happy almost anywhere between.
Yeah.
But I think I would be a little cautious on the twelve forty-two because of all the reasons we've talked.
Right. Yeah, the delta's pretty big. If you go to twelve forty-two, but
Yeah.
And I don't think anybody will criticize us.
So we have to, is, is Kim working on them?
I have no idea.
Okay, so I love Kim. Do the math.
Have we been getting any negative feedback about what taxes are likely to be?
We had one person
At the meeting.
At the meeting.
Some people unhappy.
But she didn't like her assessment.
Well, right.
Yeah.
And you, you were hit right in the head. It's not our department.
Thank you for saying that.
And I, I was clear to point that out and there were several houses that were undervalued, significantly undervalued. So everybody had the opportunity to vote in the assessment court of appeals, and Jimmy ran a great
I've been there, just not trying to scare anybody, but we had twelve appeals this year. Um, one was a motor vehicle. It's really eleven appeals, which is pretty light for a revale year. We kind of expected probably double that, triple that. And part of that, it's people, the feeling is people agree with it or are happy with that value. Another, most of it though is they don't really get the correlation with the tax dollars. So they'll get their tax bill in July. Then they're like, what the heck, what do I do?
Then we'll hear.
And we'll hear from them next February. I, I'm not trying that to scare that, but
No.
But we look at, we look at assessments, I, I, just like you just said, I, I don't look at taxes, I don't care about taxes. And if somebody comes in, I'm like, why didn't you come last year? Like, you're here for tax reasons. I, I don't care about that. Do you not think this is the right value for your house? That's what we're here to talk about. So they didn't come this year, it kind of
Ultimately, I think a lot of
They kind of agreed with it at some point.
They, you can't help but realize that the houses around you are selling for a significant amount of value and that has to, everybody in the, in their head, they look at Zillow and see what my house is worth.
Don't do that.
That, none of that works.
They're not good numbers, but you can, you can get a rough idea that yes.
I mean, I think a lot of people were probably said, ooh, not bad.
I agree.
Until they get their tax bill.
I'm heading to Palm Beach. There we go.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um,
Want a motion?
Yeah, Kim's running the numbers right now for twelve six because it's not on here. Um, I'll take this moment just to jump around a little bit. We've got suspension list on the, next on the docket, the, um, or should we wait? To regular meeting so we can, just want to make sure that we've been alright, so next on the agenda is the, um, suspension list. And Kim, real quick, it was kind enough to give a brief description of what this entails. This is called a suspense book, a book required to be, be kept by all municipalities in which the collector records motor vehicle and personal property taxes, which are deemed uncollectible, and the reason why. Items transferred to a suspense are removed from consideration as assets of the town but are not abated, and that's all capital letters, as a tax liability of the person against whom was levied. All taxes transferred to the suspension book will still be collected for a period of fifteen years from the original due date. So what, what Kim, real quick, is, is showing here that the total for the suspension list is three thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. Do we need a motion on this or is this just?
What are we, what are we doing?
Accepting?
Yeah, we have to make a motion to
Accept.
Accept that we're going to suspend this three thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents.
Meaning it's uncollectible.
Uncollectible. And then, so this, so this is
Sort of like that, yeah.
Yeah, this is form here, this is what Hollywood has to sign. We approve it and then attached are all the
Names.
Everything that's been suspended and, and what they're, and there's like, for example, moved out of state, unable to locate, moved out of state, deceased, moved out of state, failure to respond, so there's
I think if, I think if she really works hard at this, you know, if, if, if they could be found, she
I, I agree. I agree.
Yeah.
So do we have a, a motion to accept this suspension?
I, so move.
Three thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars, sixty-four cents, motion by the net, wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Julie? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
If I can bring that to Kim's pickup, if you'd like, or you can drop it off.
Yes, today's the sixteenth, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the auditor appointment. I think we've all been pretty pleased with, with Rico so far. Except for one little comment.
I didn't like that comment.
Yeah.
I thought it was really unprofessional. It was a public meeting.
What, what was, which comment?
Basically suggesting that, you know.
Cap hazard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, sorry.
I didn't like, I didn't like that.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
He made a comment that the process for completing the audit and
It was specifically how the town handles the money we get back from Region Twelve every year, goes into the general fund
Right.
As opposed to being applied to the next monthly payment for the school budget. Like other towns do. Either way, it's, it's the town's money, it's not going anywhere. I thought
That descriptive just didn't sit well.
No, it was a
Yeah.
It was a bad choice of words.
And I think he as much as admitted that. But, but he did say it.
Can, can I bring up something else apart from the motion on, on the that we're agreeing to the certification, but I heard something on Connecticut Public Radio the other day. I don't know if a bill has actually been introduced at the state to, um, get rid of, uh, motor vehicle taxes. We are, I think, one of twenty-two states, um, that charge taxes on motor vehicles. And depending upon where you live, they can be egregious in number, like people who live in, uh, New Haven pay very high rates.
Oh, Woodbury is much higher than here.
So I guess, so my question, I was just thinking that, I was just looking at these numbers, saying, okay, how much are we actually getting from motor vehicles? And if all this, I don't, I don't know that it would get through the, yep, Patrick, do you have some?
Speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, please.
They've already, uh, established a cap so that there's a mill rate cap. So if you live in, uh, if, if you're over, you know, forty-two or whatever is the mill rate. Is it thirty-five? No, I think it's thirty-five. I think it started at forty-two and now it's thirty-five. Um, so although you may be in, uh, a city that may have a sixty mill rate, for instance, your motor vehicles are taxed at a lower rate.
Okay.
Because it's not fair if you live by one side of the line or another, so
Sure.
They've done it, it's like a pilot, a pilot program, um, so that those are compensated. Uh, the one, there, there will possibly be a change, um, in the way that the state judges your assessment though of going from seven, seven five. So you'll tax, uh, seventy-five percent of your assessed value.
Appreciate it.
Appraised value, true market value. For that, that would literally just one, or another mill rate deduction if this goes through. Uh, because our grant list would grow by five percent, well, by that five percent, and then it going, it would change our budget. It's a way to artificially inflate taxes for municipalities.
Right.
That's what it is.
We just need another half million we might have to raise.
That's what I was, that's what I was wondering about, like, all of a sudden, are we going to, yeah, is there going to be another half million or so?
You're, you're correct, they are talking about just getting rid of motor vehicle taxes altogether.
Right.
This cap is in place now, but they're talking, it won't be this year.
No, I wouldn't think so.
That will be something to talk about because our mill rate is low, it is not we're the vast, I can't say the number, but I can go look it up. The vast majority for real estate, not for motor vehicle.
Yeah.
But there will be something where the tax burden will shift from the motor vehicle tax to your real estate. But working in an assessor's office, I'm not the assessor. Most of my time is spent on motor vehicles. So it'll actually be great for the assessor, she'll have more time to work on real estate where the actual dollars are coming in from and can kind of refine that instead of dealing with state DMV and stuff like that, so.
It looks like it would be about six hundred thousand.
Five thirty-eight.
Five thirty-eight plus seven, five, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a big chunk, but nothing we can do about it right now, right?
No, but we'll just keep our ears open, yeah.
And they would, they would phase that in, I'm sure.
That makes sense.
You know, it wouldn't just come in next year, and you guys would have to scramble.
Right, but. To understand, there's a lot of towns much larger than us that would be seriously impacted, so.
Oh, sure.
Just going to wipe it away, and then we have to deal with it.
Motor vehicles in general, though, are a pain, tracking down, they have to be registered with DMV, so all the New York cars, the Vermont plates, the Florida plates are, those have become more and more popular, and tracking those things down, so, and it is just kind of an unfair system. We benefit here, where you could have the same exact car, live one house over in New Milford, you're paying three times as much as Roxbury's paying, you have the same exact cars.
My gosh.
Can we do any enforcement on license plates?
We have a license plate reader on our police car. Linda and Kim, and Kim have been great as much as they can, they have sent out letters to people that they've noticed that, hey, you're here, either you're registered to vote here, your kids are in school here or something, and we notice you don't have a car on the motor vehicle list. State law requires if you are here the majority of the time, you need to register your car within sixty days, and if, for whatever, and they, they can still keep their car in New York if they're part-time, but then they can come in and Linda has, I don't know the number, but I know she's, at least some cars on the personal property list.
Yep.
Has an unregistered motor vehicle, so they're still paying the town tax because they're using our roads, they're using.
Right.
All that kind of stuff, but the car is physically still registered in New York or Florida or some of that.
Okay.
So, they add it.
As best they can, you know, they're not police officers, they can't sit in somebody's driveway and see how often they come and leave, but.
Right.
They're doing, they're doing as good as they can.
Last year, the board of select, they introduced investigators to do that, come through town, it was sixty thousand for the first run through. If we weren't going to entertain that, it was too much money to spend, and what they do is they just start recording license plates in town that are logged, and then they do the same thing in a couple months, and they keep getting, and they're going to investigate. It's very, very tough to track down a town like this where everybody parks in a garage.
Or they are just legally New Yorkers that are up here on the weekends.
And they vote down there and all, everything else.
You get a break on your garage, I think, if you can, if you have a New York.
Yes.
In the city. In the city, yeah.
That can be a big number.
Yeah.
Like, what, twenty-two percent?
It's, it's significant.
No, it's just.
I thought it was like eight.
Yeah, like eight. You know what happened is they were trying to reach, increase it from eight to ten many years ago, and they drafted it poorly, and so it became eight plus ten. And once they had the money, they weren't going to give it back out.
Great story.
Sounds about right.
That's.
Oh, my gosh.
So, so getting back to see.
Yes.
The auditor appointment, I believe he's under contract with us for one more year, right?
Patrick, I don't know what the term is.
I think we talked about it before.
We did.
I think it's got at least another year.
Yeah.
Yes, you know, we went out to bid, I don't know how many years ago, and, and we got a bid from somebody in Maine or Vermont that wasn't even going to be on site, and it. I, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at a new auditor, but I just don't, I'm not sure that, that the process we went through really got us nowhere.
Yeah, so, we'll, we'll get ahead of that.
Yeah.
Who do our neighboring towns use?
They use them.
They all use the same. It's very expensive to start, for a new auditor to come in and have to do the whole audit program and everything.
Historical data.
So, it's tough.
I wish they were big enough that they rotated lead auditors, so that it was, there was a different set of eyes.
They, they do rotate.
The junior.
Yeah, yeah, that goes, the overarching, but.
Yeah.
I've dealt with, I don't know how many over the years.
Yeah.
For that exact reason, to get different eyes on it.
And that's a good question, are they big enough that they could, have somebody else?
I don't think they are, and I think that's part of the problem, the, the larger firms, larger regional firms don't want to do this.
No, which is small.
Yeah, it's, it's expensive, it's not profitable.
Oh, and you had printed it in color.
Got it.
Geez.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
Five twenty-nine, four ninety-seven.
Five twenty-nine.
All the numbers stay the same, it's just this, oh, thank you.
That's five twenty-nine, seven twenty-eight.
So, Julie, you can't see this, but the, the buy down to twelve six is five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Got it.
That'll get us down to twelve six.
Okay.
So, do we, do we have a motion on the floor to buy down, to buy down the twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four budget? Down to twelve six.
Some move.
Of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We have a motion from the net, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Julie? You're good, okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Harry's unanimous, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I didn't hear that portion of it, that you were setting mill rate at twelve six.
Twelve six.
Twelve point six.
Yes, so, okay.
I'm pretty sure I did, but.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to, do we have a motion?
No, no, just, no, just, it can all be one motion. Yeah.
We've already approved the buy down. We have a motion on the floor to set the mill rate at twelve point six.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
All right.
Okay.
Nice job, everybody.
Yeah, super. How about the whole evening?
Congratulations. Kim can talk on the auditor.
So, you have to appoint the auditor every year, but we're, we're in a cut for your cut back.
Yeah.
Charles Heaven, but still, you have to appoint.
Okay.
Regardless of that, you speak for your first.
And we have one more year in the.
We have one more year, so.
All right.
For the year ending on the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, you need to appoint, and this is the last year.
So, do we have a motion to appoint Charles Heaven in, am I saying it right? Charles Heaven and Company to be our auditor for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget?
So, move?
No, no, twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, it's this.
It's the audit of this year.
It's the.
Oh, I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward, right. So, do we motion to appoint Rico of Charles Heaven and Company to do the audit for the current budget of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion?
I'd like to suggest that we tell him that we're a little bit concerned about the whole thing, and that he shouldn't assume automatically that they're going to get appointed next year, maybe that'll get him to fire him.
All right.
Well, the contract with Charles Heaven and Company is out after this.
Right. But I've had to tell him now that they just shouldn't assume automatically that they're going to get it next year.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if that's going to get anywhere or not, since they really, I mean, we like them to change people, I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah, John had meant, John Hopter had mentioned that, because that was one of the questions I'd asked him, how often do we change auditors?
Yeah.
And he said it was very problematic, because there are very few who want to do municipal audits.
Right.
And they'd gone, the, the Board of Finance at the time had gone through the process of interviewing people, basically, they couldn't find anyone else.
Yeah.
Which is disheartening, because, I mean, any company.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
A company should be changing orders.
Competition agrees. Success.
I guess, Kim, just keep your, your, ears, eyes and ears open for other firms, we could potentially.
You can go out, you can go out, spit every year.
I know, but I remember what happened, it was, it was a fruitless exercise.
It was a waste of time.
You know, most audit firms who take down doing municipal audit, you have to seriously have that. And there's kind of a, well.
If all the towns around us use the same one, it's going to be hard to change it, too, because there's a certain benefit they get from two more.
Sitting on a job that's already.
You feel like they're a little bit on autopilot? That's how sometimes when he presents it, it, it feels to me.
Um, I, I, I think this was a tough year all around for everybody, or it's all, it's all I can tell you about it, because in past years, he's had his daughter, who's a partner in the firm now.
Right.
She's just had a baby, so she's, she's not available right now, and they're having a hard time getting new people into the firm, it's, it's trying to hire good people who will stay. It's, it's kind of the same thing every.
There's an article in the Wall Street Journal just yesterday about, no one wants to be an accountant, kids graduating from college, they don't want to be an accountant.
You ready for your report, sir?
So, it's, there's a lot of.
Okay. Thanks on the agenda.
We don't want to.
For selecting this report.
No.
All right, I don't have much, I have a lot of work to do now, because now that you have just set this budget in fifteen days, I have a whole bunch of RFPs to go out, I'm going to get those diesel tanks out, got to get bids for tennis courts, I have bridges to put out for RFPs, like I said, we're, we're starting with Wiltley and Chalobe, so those are the first ones, later this summer, hopefully we can get to Judd's Bridge and Century Hill. You have chip sealing's going on, we have a wonderful slate of stuff coming forward, and I just really wanted to take a moment and thank you guys for, I was completely